Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Robert Thank you. Well called, please.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Schuster?
Present.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
Present.
Mr. Smarall?
Here. Spencer, the meeting of the minutes?
Third order, 3A, Ministers of Scranton Firefighters Pension Commission Meeting held September 17th, 2025. 3B, Ministers of Scranton Police Pension Commission Meeting held September 17th, 2025. 3C, Ministers of the Composite Pension Board Meeting held September 17th, 2025. 3D, Controlless Report for the month ending September 30th, 2025. 3E, Ministers of the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held September 17th, 2025. 3F, Agenda for the Non-Uniform Municipal Pension Board Meeting held October 15th, 2025. 3G, Lackawanna County Planning Commission Subdivision and Land Development Evaluation Report, reviewed September 22nd, 2025. 3H, Correspondence Received from City Business Administration on October 10th, 2025 regarding updated quarterly payroll preparation tax collections as of September 30th, 2025. 3I, Letters of Support from Local Businesses for the Walkability and Streetscape Project Ordinances.
Are there any comments on any of your third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Two quick ones. So, this Thursday at the Victor L. Fury over on West Side, all are welcome, dine in or take out. It's their monthly luncheon, it's a week early. It's Thursday, October 23rd, 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. North Main Avenue, they have polenta or pasta meatballs or half and half, $12 for members, 14 for non-members. Also, in addition to that, this Saturday, October 25th, 4 to 6, Scranton DPW parking lot, the local 23005, Scranton DPW workers will be having their trunk or treat. It's over at Popular Street at their headquarters, and then I think they'll have a live DJ, decorations. These DPW workers and their families do a fantastic job with this every year, so it's a good one to hit out of all the trunk and treats. And that is all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. One more.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, John Pocheus.
We'll get a copy of this, right? John Pocheus, resident of Manuka Section of Scranton. First of all, I want to say I'm here tonight as a citizen, I'm not here representing anybody except myself, okay? I went to a public meeting at Lackawanna College on this project, and I can't even remember how long ago it was, and the administration said they were going to come back with another public meeting, and if I didn't catch it, my wife didn't watch it on your council meeting last week on the caucus, I wouldn't have known. So I come over tonight just to see what I could find out about this, and I jotted down some notes, I'm going to try to make some quick comments here. I'm glad to say that for anything like this to happen, it had to have an engineering study. And I appear, I can't verify it, but it looked like the city engineer might have did the study that went to Pendot. I was told it was over 400 pages, so it was a pretty extensive report. One thing I did like about the presentation was, a lot of this isn't set in stone because there's a trial basis with removing of the signals and different things like that. I know there was a question brought up last week, but all traffic signals are owned by the municipalities in which they're erected in. You have to take out the permit, you're responsible for maintenance and everything else, so I thought there was a question, but you do own every single inch in Scranton. 10 years ago, when I was still a city engineer, we were involved in the CBG Federal Downtown Traffic Signal, which updated 48 signals throughout the city. I don't know what transpired since 2015, when that project was closed out, and today that allows these signals not, suddenly changed to stop signs. I heard talks tonight about slower traffic, and these are a couple pages I have out of the MUTCD, which is the municipal guide for traffic control devices, and it's highlighted here, under any instances, that yield or stop signs should not be used for speed control. So if they're saying stop signs are going to slow traffic down, that's not something you want to do. And where, this is another thing, this I'm quoting from the MUTCD, "Where traffic control signals are justified, the multi-way stop is an interim measure that can be installed and quickly to control traffic while arrangements are being made for installation of traffic signals." Seems like we're reversing that. We have a signal, we want to take it back out and put stop signs in. Maybe it's warranted at some intersections, the warrants may not be met, you know, so many cars and stuff like that. But I think they have to look at this. My biggest concern on the whole thing, looking at this from my experience, is that the bump outs, if these have full curbing tapering down into the handicap access points across the street, I do not see how large vehicles such as a fire truck is going to be able to make the turn while encroaching on the bump outs. And if they're curbed into the intersection before they drop, I don't know how that's going to work. Because at the most, they're going to have two 12-foot lanes at the throat, and I don't think that's, my question is, did they look at the turning movements for larger vehicles, especially delivery trucks, which we do get, delivery trucks into downtown and tractor-trailers in the morning to make deliveries into the businesses at an early time? Did they look at, in the study, because there was a concern for pedestrians and everyone else, installing those flashing beacons, which they have at the university at some of the trail crossings in the city? They're extensively used in the state of Delaware, I've seen them on Route 1 throughout the shore points down there, and they're relatively inexpensive, and that could be possibly a safeguard if they do go to stop signs, that they, you know, somebody could push the button, but again, most people don't push the buttons, and I was told a long time ago in life that there's only one thing you can't fix in life, and that's being stupid, you know what I mean? Everything else can be fixed, but people won't take the time to do it. Two quick comments, and I want to get out of here. If they change Penn Avenue to two-way, what's going to happen to all that diagonal parking down there? That's going to be a loss of a lot of parking down on Penn Avenue, the 300 block. I think that should be looked at, see if they accounted for that, because if you go two ways, you can't have, I was never a big fan of diagonal parking, but it got put in, and it seems to be working down there.
That block is going to be an exception with that remaining one way, because of the diagonal parking.
Okay, thank, I didn't know that, Dr. Rothschild, thank you very much. And just another thing, too, I was the surveyor of record for when the train station became the first hotel back in the late 80s or late 70s, and the wall we're fixing is actually the Radisson's Wall. So I don't know, there would have to be easements or whatever for that. I don't want to go over my time, I thank you for listening to me, and hope you'll take these comments back to the administration. Any questions?
Yeah, Mr. Pocheus, that 2015 study, what was the name of that study?
Oh, no. The city received, Pendot received $7 million, or $6 or $7 million, federal money, all federal money, to rehab all, or replace the traffic signals in downtown Scranton. It got expanded, and we went out as far as like on Wyoming Avenue, like the Popular Street, and past Popular Street, we went out to the next street, I think it's, I forget which one it is, Larch, excuse me, and we went up and did some work on Music Street at those signals and everything else. So that project was closed out around 2015, so we, and there was change orders. And just one more thing, just, you know, I've been probably in every vault that's in the city of Scranton down there, and there's still a lot of vaults left, so that's another concern for this project here, okay?
Can you send, can you email us those questions that you just had?
Yeah, I'll try to put them together.
Send them to us.
Not a good emailer.
Okay.
No, I'm okay with that, okay?
Or if you want to give a copy.
Can we pull them from the meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, we can pull those questions.
I'll pull them from the meeting, yeah.
And we'll get them answered.
You can send me, tell me if it's what I said, or something like that, if you, before you sent it, or whatever.
No need, I'll pull them from the transcript.
Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Joan Holdewannis, Scranton. I heard tonight that the 2026 budget will, the draft will be ready in about 10 days or so. I just want to let people know that, and ask Frank if we could have a paper copy sent to the Albright Memorial Library and a second copy down to Nancy K. Holmes, so that people can stop by the libraries if they want to examine it. It's much easier to go to the library than it is to try to come into City Hall to do that. A lot of people, for whatever reason, prefer to sit down with a paper copy, so when they are ready for prime time, if you could send two copies to the library for the Albright and Nancy K. Holmes.
We do provide the Albright, and I'll make sure that the Nancy K. Holmes gets a copy.
Thank you.
That's very helpful. DPW, do we have a new director yet?
Do not.
Oh, good grief, nobody wants to make a buck in this town, okay.
I believe they did an interview, I know there were some interviews.
Getting close?
Monday, I don't know how close, but I'm told there was some interviews.
Okay, well, that's progress. How about progress on DPW's union contract? You know, because it's probably, pay raises for them are probably not going to be reflected in next year's budget, which means that that'll have to be retroactively paid. Oh, public service announcement, hopefully people know that Thursday night at 6:00 p.m. Brennan Hall at the University of Scranton is the debate for the candidates for county commissioner. And I mention it because what happens in the county, especially with reassessment and taxes, is going to directly impact Scranton. So it would probably behoove people who live in Scranton to check in and go to that debate to see who's best qualified to fill that third chair long-term. Although I hear Brenda Sacco is being sworn in tomorrow as an interim county commissioner. You can't make this stuff up, I swear. So that's Thursday, October 23rd, 6:00 p.m., Brennan Hall in the Pern Auditorium, and ought to be interesting. With regard to this streetscape, one thing I wanted to ask Chief Judge, and I didn't have time to do it, I remember hearing last week that one of the...
It seems like you're trying to finish. Go ahead.
Go ahead and complete, who's got their thing on? I heard last week during the caucus that one of the purposes of the streets, or the stop signs, was to slow the movement of tractor from block to block. Okay, if that is true, will it not also slow the movement of emergency vehicles from block to block? As it stands now with traffic lights, you can make all the lights going down a road green or red, but if you have stop signs, aren't you going to have to slow down and check both ways, block after block? Will that not slow down the response time of emergency vehicles as they pass through the downtown? Or am I crazy?
No.
Okay? And I have a question, we still don't have a state budget, and doesn't look like one is going to be signed within the next couple days. Has that affected money that we get for the city's pensions, the MMO? Does anybody know? Or any other money that we get from the state?
Joan, I don't see, I wasn't notified anything affecting us now, but I don't know about the MMOs, I don't know.
Yeah, because, you know, I mean...
Mr. Smarall? That money's already been received, it comes from a separate fund.
Oh, good. But are there any other buckets of money that are going to be held until the budget is approved? Does that mean?
Was that question asked?
Because we're on the verge of providing our own draft budget, you know? If it's not wonderful, I know it is impacting the county big time, and they are very concerned about that. Okay, that's all I have for tonight, thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
That question was asked last week, correct?
I believe it was, it's funded by out-of-state insurance companies, a 2% fund.
Can we ask, I believe, I could swear that last week I asked, could we just ask the business administrator if there are any funds in the city budget that are affected by the state impasse?
That'll be affected by it, okay.
Yeah.
I will.
Thank you.
Les Spindler?
Evening, Council, Les Spindler, City Resident Homeowner. To piggyback on what Joan said, about the fire trucks having, or any emergency vehicle having to stop at the stop signs, I remember Fire Chief Judge said last week that he likes changing to one-way streets to two-way streets, because it'll save them time, and every second counts on the fire. Well, if every second counts, stopping at a stop sign is going to, is not going to help with them getting to the fires faster. I'd said from day one, it's ridiculous putting stop signs in. John Pocheus had said that in the report that he had, does not slow down the traffic. We cannot put stop signs in to replace traffic lights, it's ridiculous, and it's, lives are going to be lost. And if lives are lost, whoever votes to pass this, the blood will be on your hands. And as Joan also said other times, they took a study. What did the study do? Did they ask any people who live downtown, or anybody who lived in the city, if, what they thought about this? No, they didn't. But last week, Channel 22, 28, did a poll, if people thought it was a good idea to replace traffic lights with stop signs. 85% of the people voted it wasn't a good idea. 85%. That tells you what the people think of this stupid idea. It's ridiculous, and it shouldn't be done. And I'm going to say again, I think this should be tabled till January, when a new council takes place. Because I know the three of you are just going to do what the mayor says, and you're going to pass it. You don't care what the people say. And like I said, the blood will be on your hands when people are killed. Oh, another thing, they want to put bike lanes in. Bike lanes are going to be on the right-hand side. If I want to make a right turn, how do I know if a bike is coming up on the inside of me? More injuries or deaths. This study is ridiculous, these people don't, he couldn't even, the two of them couldn't even answer Tom Schuster's questions. They had a debate for five minutes, they didn't know what the hell he was talking about. It's, this whole thing should be scrapped, it's ridiculous. Changing the subject. On Dorothy Street, where we had that road subsidence a few weeks ago, I guess the gas company and the water company were there, and they painted lines, and I guess they're going to be working, it was right near where the road subsidence was. Now today, I walked by again, and it was, it was the water company, I think paints green lines. It was green line painted, one arrow pointing towards the road subsidence, another one pointing away from it. So it looks like they're eventually going to start working on that. So could Council maybe send a letter to the water company and see when this work is going to get started? Because pretty soon, the bad weather's going to be setting in, and they're not going to have time to do it then. They better get going. I guess that means they're going to be digging it up somehow, because they wouldn't be painting those lines. I guess that's all I have tonight, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Spindler.
Bob Bowles, Scranton. First off, what I heard here tonight is an absolute joke. A build-out, slippery slopes coming off the sidewalks for handicap without ridges or abrasion in the cement, blacktop you're going to put down that gets corroded real fast from salt and everything else that you will put on, calcium. But turning radiuses for a tractor-trailer, how the hell are they going to make a turn here, coming down there and trying to figure out how you're going to turn the truck around? It's a simple question for them, and they can't answer, not with a build-out. You're narrowing the road, you're narrowing the radius. And red lights, people go through stop signs just as quick as they're going to go through a damn red light. And you're going to put in bicycle lanes? Get onto Wyoming Avenue, yesterday a clown coming the wrong way on Wyoming Avenue on his bicycle. So what good's a lane going to do when you've got no common sense? So you could look at a lot of the stuff you want to change, but putting two-way traffic and then trying to make a right-hand turn. I had an incident right here in Scranton with a tractor-trailer, where an idiot went and passed me on the right-hand side and created an accident. So this is the issues you got to look at, and I didn't hear any of that tonight, including the fire department with bigger engines and equipment trying to make a turn. All the lights should go red, like they do in every elder municipalities, so should they go for the police car or ambulances. And that eliminates this ridiculous thing that we saw here. One thing I'm going to say very clear is, you got to worry about people handicapped going down a slope, I mean, that scared the hell out of me. The tax assessor has been sued by me, so there's not going to be a certification of the tax assessment, not for a long, long time, because the commissioners can't do it, and I'm stopping it on behalf of the people in this community, once and for all, instead of being taken advantage by dictators. The city has been around, I'm a lifelong resident here, and what I saw was the King's protest with his Capellini and Gahan, with Capellini looking like a total, total ass, as far as I'm concerned. I was there and listened to him screaming and yelling, "That's our flag." And I say "our flag," not anybody else's flag, "that's our flag, and you respect that flag." If you were a veteran, you wore a uniform, your president was your president. Not a king, and they sat here like idiots babbling out there the other day. Why the hell didn't they say something when Joe Biden was a president? Was he a king, or was he a queen? What the hell was he? Nobody knows, but we changed the street. So for people to stand out here was just a total disgrace. I brought one of my trailers, and it was the trailer I used against Harris and Tampon Tim. Pelosi is a centaurian, Harris right on her back, Hillary leading her, and Joe Biden kissing her ass. That's what we went through here, and these are the idiots that ran the country beforehand, and you call Trump a king? No, he's the President of the United States. We had uniforms, no matter what president was there, and the Colonel could back me up. We went to do what we had to do, not stand on street corners like imbeciles out here. And that was just totally, when I see this guy who wants to be the commissioner, Capellini, out there screaming and yelling and everything, like, what the hell are you doing? Gahan stood there the last time and said, he's not there as a commissioner, he's there as a private citizen, when a couple days later, he had an article that said, "Oh, if you're a commissioner, you're a commissioner, period, if you're running." Well, I'm asking us for a resignation, I'm filing a suit to remove him, because either you are or you aren't, enough of the games against the people in this community. And last off, I am running for mayor again, I decided, I've spoken with the higher court, they're looking to overturn where I was kept off the ballot by the rogue Charlie Spano, who illegally filed to keep me off there, and a judge backed him up, he had to go through the district attorney to do it, and he didn't do that. So I'm coming back, and I'm coming back here to kick ass and see it happens, and I want to see everybody stand up for the people in this community to make those damn hospitals employee-owned. Once and for all, everybody, including your commissioners, your senators, and everybody else on the Democrat Party, get the lead out, take care of it, worry about the people, make them employee-owned. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowles.
Good evening, Council. Lee Morgan. What I have here today is that the city has an opportunity to spend millions of dollars in grant money, and the council's going to spend it, and the mayor's going to spend that money, whether it's a good idea or not. And it's really a tragic idea for the city. This project has no merit, but we have to spend the money. We'll come up with a million reasons why we should do that. The chief of police, the head of the fire department, the representatives that sat on this, at this table today, they either work for the mayor, or they're organizations tied to state government or city government, not anybody representing the people. Now, when you take a look at their opinions and their ideas, are they flawed or aren't they? I don't think you're capable of making those decisions. Not to say that you couldn't figure it out possibly, but this is a complicated issue, and the way the city is now, there were studies done at the time, and it's right as it stands. Now, you tried to make the downtown into a neighborhood, and it's not, it's a place to conduct business. But since the city is so poorly managed, and Scranton isn't the only city that's poorly managed, there's a lot of them, okay? But going forward with this project, you just have an opportunity to spend a lot of money, and you're going to spend it, whether it has any value or not, even at the detriment to the residents, because they don't really matter. They can't even afford their taxes. You know, what we really need in this city is, we need a group of elected officials that understand one thing, we have one functioning hospital up by Naught Park, okay? We have tons of children coming out of public education that aren't properly educated and aren't ready to go to college, the vast majority of them. So we need remedial education programs, because we're going to pass this city on to somebody someday, and they're going to have to have the ability to run it. You know, as I watched the city spin after 40 years of coming here, I was thrilled to see John Pocheus come here today. You know, I watched him when he was a council member, and the discussions that we had here at that time with Mr. Azori and various other people, they were informed and they were intelligent. They didn't need the solicitor to tell them anything, they'd tell the solicitor things. We've lost that. We've lost the ability to have a mayor that can run the city. And when you take a look at the Hilltop Project, we have a former mayor involved in that project. We're still taking yard signs down, that was his number-one thing. Chris Doherty was great at doing that. You take a look at who brought the city to its knees, Chris Doherty did. He sued the public, he sued the unions in the city, didn't care how much money it costed. Bankrupted the city, built the parking garages. We're sitting here today talking about more slots. We need to sell that parking authority assets off completely, and get out of the parking business, and get rid of the authority, and go like this, and just wipe our hands of that. The one last thing I have here is, you know, I made a video about the lookout, maybe somebody watched it and they decided that they're going to fix it. Well, you know, when you do that project, you need not hire a large company to do that project, you need to hire somebody who knows what they're doing, that's a stonemason. You need three guys to do that project, and the person who mixes the mortar's got to know what they're doing, so that that project will be there for 85 more years. And not only that, how you place them stones and where they're at, they're probably throwing over the lookout, somebody's got to collect them, and they may have to take that wall apart and reassemble it. So we need to not go to can we spend a ton of money? We have to hire somebody that knows what they're doing, knows how to make the mortar, knows how to put the wall back together... knows how to put the wall back together again, because I think that wall was built by the WPA or the WPC, and those people knew what they were doing back in that time, because they built a lot of structures with stone, okay? And just going half-assed and doing it is just a complete disgrace to something as important to this city's history as that lookout is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Ron Elman?
Good evening, Council. I wish I could speak to y'all like Bob Leach did in 2018, if you remember that episode. Firstly, Mr. King, in leaving the council, I know you have the legalities on your side, but you're shameful, biased support for cognitives, heinous intentions downtown. You people are trying, the three of you, to obligate the city, ram-rotting this walkability nonsense as soon as possible. There's not a reason in the world it can't be done after elections, except you know it would fail to vote. But then, there's the possibility, three of you might not return. You know how elections go. I find it so hard to believe that Chief Carroll sits here advocating this walkability nonsense, the removal of gas-paying automobiles for completely illegal use of the roads for EVs that aren't insured, inspected, or licensed. There's no telling how old the people are driving them, but it's just complete lunacy to consider this at this time. $27 million for nothing, except to enhance downtown, a bunch of lousy tax cheats complaining all the time about as little as they pay, like reassessment. I wonder how many of them reassessed the little taxes they had. You know, several years ago, I don't remember when, 10 or 12 years ago, a poor soul was killed in front of Boscoff's on that intersection. I stood right here and said, "When I grew up in Memphis, they had a system. The lights were red, nobody moved. In the other lane, the lights were red, nobody moved. Then for a minute or so, nobody could drive anywhere, turn or anything, and people would run all over the place." It's accident, there's no accidents that way. There's no problem. There's no $240,000 for some clown to con the city out of more money. It's just such a waste that you're talking about. Concrete and paint costing $27 million needlessly. I know, I guess I'm sort of what you say on the streets, using the term loosely, like Mr. Little knows what I'm talking about, the people you meet and talk to. I haven't, I just haven't heard nobody say anything favorable. It doesn't matter, Republican, Democrat, Independent, there's nobody, it's like it was said last week, "If it's not broke, don't fix it." Cognitively is a failure. Don't vote for failure. I know it's needless for me to ask you, but don't let this go through now and obligate our city to $27 million nonsense like this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Exanthus?
Good evening, Council. I'm here just to state an opinion. I don't know if many of you walk the downtown, throughout most of downtown. I do. I'm sure many other people do, probably other people in this room probably have. But I care for a lady. I'm an aide to a lady that's in Delaware Towers. She likes to go out, like most people. She's 86 years old, but she either uses a walker or she's stuck in the wheelchair while she's out, if it's for a long period of time. Try to push a wheelchair when there's a stop sign across the road is very hard, because I have done it, on the parts where there's no streetlights. So if you could imagine what it's gonna be like, if they wanna take out all the lights to put more stop signs in, it'll be a lot worse. I mean, I don't understand, you know, if it, I know probably you stayed these words before, but it's been this way for how long with these streetlights? And now, all of a sudden, it seems they wanna change it, which doesn't make sense. Onto the other point. I don't know if either of you know that at Greeridge Street and Dixon Avenue, there is a bus sign that's at the corner there, just before it gets up to the light of Greeridge Street. Try to get off the bus, stand there, and across the way, there's a stop sign on the opposite side where the Dixon, where you come off Dixon. Well, as you cross, if a car lets you cross that's on that side where you're trying to cross, the car that's turning where the stop sign is, they don't stop. They'll try to keep going as you're crossing. So I, you know, I mean, try the streetlight downtown. You press the button, the button turns, says to walk, and cars go. So try to imagine what it's gonna be like with stop signs everywhere throughout town. I mean, maybe somebody could look into stop signs for, or a streetlight for Greeridge Street where the buses let off, but they all tell me that's state road. But I just want everyone to know that it's not gonna be very pleasant. I think maybe everybody should have walked down there a few times before this is done. Thank you.
Thank you. Yvonne, Exanthus?
Good evening, Council. My name is Yvonne Exanthus. I live on Dixon Avenue. First of all, I wanna thank Mr. McAndrew. You put a 15-mile-an-hour sign in front of my house. Then they came weeks later, put in the road, slow school, but I can count on one hand how many people pay attention to this sign. It's pathetic. We have two schools in one block, two senior homes in one block. Yesterday, after school, there was a collision at the four-way stop sign on Delaware and Dixon. There could have been a child there crossing. I'm worried about these kids. Some of them are handicapped, some of them are blind, some of them have wheelchairs. Then we have the kids from the school who are kids will be kids. They start hitting each other, they punch each other, they go into the road. On Dixon Avenue, it should be a one-way street. 1,700 Block of Dixon Avenue has chop hunger across the street, which brings in tractor-trailers twice a week with food for underprivileged children. Try to go up Dixon Avenue, there's tractor-trailers, blue ribbon ice cream delivering to the school. Then up the street, we have Center for Independent Living. Next door to me, I have a senior building. Across the street, I have a senior building. They're all coming out. That street is ridiculous. It's a narrow road. Something has to be done. So yesterday, after the accident, a half hour later, we start the ATV races on Dixon Avenue. Is that a law against that? I mean, that's ridiculous. Okay, this has nothing to do with this, but I wanna thank Mr. King for sticking up with the Scranton School District weeks ago. My children both graduate the Scranton School District. My daughter works very hard as a home health aide. She also works for her union. She's a union worker. My son is in his third year of residency at Temple University Hospital. He worked at three different hospitals in the last two years. He is going, he's worked, I'd say approximately 12 years to become this doctor, which now the government is in funding research, so things are slowing down, which I am just proud of my kids. We grad, I graduated from Scranton School. They're great schools. My son went to the Schreier's Honors College. He graduated from there at Penn State University. He got scholarships for Temple. He went to Concordia University in Montreal, he graduated, and Penn State and Temple Med School. I'm sorry, but I don't like people criticizing the Scranton School District. My children grew up in library. I was working, my mom would take them to the children's library, this big, and they would spend their summer there, going there every day. As they grew up, they went to the library. They both became quite educated. I don't know, I don't see a bad education in the public school district. I think people should go more to the public school district. You learn a lot. I can't criticize anybody. And I wanna thank Frank for putting up with me when I called about Dixon Avenue. I'm very sorry, but I worry about the kids. Mr. McAndrew, if you could do anything, I don't know if there's a thing they could put, like my son was in, he said, "Why don't they put one of those things that tells you how fast you're going?" Because nobody goes 15 miles an hour on that street.
Mr. Volender, would you please request a traffic stop?
I will.
And that's why the four-way stop sign, not a good idea. It doesn't do anything. They, nobody stops. I stood waiting for a cold bus with my daughter. I saw two people, I was shocked, they actually stopped. I was gonna give them an award. Anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you. John Thomas?
John Thomas, Scranton. I don't come every week to speak, as you know, and you heard me in the past, I'm a terrible speaker. I'm just not a good public speaker, so bear with me. I agree with what Yvonne was talking about and her daughter, about Dixon Avenue, and we've been here several times, as you know, in the past. Really take a good look at it, you know, people know this traffic study. It's a 1,700 block. As far as these stop signs, it's not a good idea. You know, I'm Blackwater Avenue, Mobiley Street, you, the lights, make sure the current lights are working properly, and if they're not, you get new lights. And the thing, I can't name all the streets, but Blackwater Avenue in particular, Mobiley Street, obviously, you gotta have lights there. If you could make it, you go for a couple of blocks, it'll stay green, whereas at some, a lot of streets, like on Wyoming Avenue and a few other streets, you come to, you get a green light, and you're coming to the next block, it's red, and then, you know what I'm saying? There's no coordination in the lights. Something like that could be done, people look at that. And as far as Saratoga, they had the All-Kings Rally. I don't like to talk about the federal government here, because this is not federal government I don't agree with the title, "All No Kings." It's no dictator. This man sitting in the Oval Office, as of today, is an authoritarian. He rolls out the red carpet for Putin, a dictator. Everything is quiet, nobody says anything. He's telling Republican senators and congressmen not to talk to the Democrats. He don't believe in legislation. I don't, I don't think he understands legislation. And, you know, it's a terrible situation. The Affordable Care Act, they might get rid of it now. They have to get the tax credits. And, you know, an awful lot of people, people who have money, it's not gonna be affordable. Health insurance, the premiums are gonna go skyrocket. And I gotta comment, Mr. Bullis, he had his trailer there past Saratoga, and I spoke about this last November. He had that same trailer just before the election last year, and it was there, Saratoga. You know, something ought to be done. It's not, that's not political. It's disgusting, the things that were on that trailer is disgusting. It was profanity, is what it was. And I know, I know Council, I know the mayor and the administration, I don't think that nothing's gonna be done about it. And that goes for anybody, not just the one person. Something like that is just, it's just terrible. All right, thank you for your time, Council.
Thank you, Mr. Thomas. Jeff Fox?
Yes. Good evening, Council. I was here two weeks ago about a sidewalk on Seventh Avenue that my special-kneed son fell in, and it ended up, he sprained his knee, pulled a ligament. They said they're gonna send DPW down there to look at it, and I go by there every day, sometimes a couple of times a day. I see nobody even looking at it, let alone walking. And then I was also told, you don't know if the city owns it or privately owned. It's two weeks, I'm not hearing nothing. I got a phone number. I called the phone number, voicemail. I leave a message. I leave my email. Nobody's getting in touch with me. And then again, when you're talking about these, which I didn't know until tonight, these bike tracks or whatever, like, again, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Like, you got money to do this, but like, where's the money to fix these sidewalks where a special-kneed child is falling and tearing his leg up? So I was just hoping that, like, if somebody could get in touch with me. I mean, two weeks, I mean, it's not 1925, it's 2025. It's not like you have to go look through a steel file cabinet. Like, this should be on a computer. Who owns that sidewalk? So I appreciate if somebody, like...
Sir, where is it? Seventh Avenue and where?
Right around the corner. It's like across from that credit union, down from, I believe it's a Ukrainian church.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Volender, can you find out?
That was submitted to code enforcement. I'll follow up and see where they're at on that.
Yeah, 'cause that's what I got two weeks ago, and then when I called here about the status, I get a voicemail. I leave my name, my phone number, my email. Two weeks, and like, nobody knows who owns this. Thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mark McGavitch? Mr. Volender, could you find out, look on our map, just see if we can figure out who owns it, if it is city-owned? I don't believe it's city-owned.
They have that information. I'll follow up and get a status.
Thank you.
And the reason why he's not getting a return call from them.
Okay.
Good evening, Council. Mr. Smurl, at the South Side meeting recently, it was this past Wednesday, you made a comment. It said, "We desperately need to do something with the hospital," which is hopefully coming soon. I was just wondering, could you clarify what hospital you were alluding to at that meeting?
Which hospital I was speaking about?
Yeah, which hospital?
That one was that night, it was Geisinger was the hospital.
Okay. Is there anything going on with the parking garage coming back?
I'm sorry?
The parking garage was voted on at one time and voted down?
Correct.
Is it involving the parking garage by chance or no?
There was supposed to be a whole new project. Whether it's coming out or not, I don't know.
Okay. Next, I wanna talk about an issue that seems like it's not getting the attention it should. In a recent council election, this was the most previous one, candidate was accused of collecting forged signatures on the petition to get on the ballot for the primary, and this individual was charged and was still allowed to be run in the general, which I couldn't understand. But, you know, our city, we certainly have had our fair share of corruption and the lack of integrity, and I do have to have a question for Mr. Smurl again as to why that... And I do have to have a question for Mr. Smurl again as to why that the withdrawal did happen and switch parties to an independent. I read the article in the Times Tribune dated March 17th from Jeff Horvath, and I do have some additional questions. You quoted, sorry, it quoted you, Mr. Smurl, as follows. "It came to my attention over the weekend that some of my campaign people got a bit overzealous and actually got the signatures that were not verified. I was wondering if you could tell me, how did you become aware of this?"
I don't remember. I'll have to think about it.
I guess my, my question to everyone would be, if, if somebody robbed the bank and they returned the money six days later, should they still be charged with robbery? And I ask that because, Mr. Smurl, do you believe you broke the election laws by submitting an affidavit that was false?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
I said, "Do you believe you broke the election laws by submitting an affidavit that was false?" And that was regarding the signatures?
If I had known at the time it was false, of course.
But my, my point was, do you know how long that you had submitted that?
I don't, I don't remember.
It was March 11th, and it took to March 18th or 17th, one or the other. I'm sorry, I don't have the date down, where you actually withdrew at that point. I think it was the 17th. That was the article from Jeff Horvath. And I just was, you know, I do think it's a big deal. I don't think the intention was malice, but I do think it's a, it's a big deal because there's other candidates that they did follow all the rules. And, you know, I feel like it's a loophole that you were able to switch as an independent because the, you know, the rules weren't followed. And unfortunately, it was an affidavit. Are you aware of anyone who may have contacted you or signed your petition that had contact from law enforcement? Looking into that. Are you aware of anyone that would have signed or yourself that had any investigation done from law enforcement?
I don't know what you're, what you're saying.
With the, the affidavit, it was on the back of the petitions, when you have the signatures, you have the person who passes the petition around.
Correct.
And then as the candidate, I believe, we sign for the expenses, and we just sign to make sure that everything is, is accurate. So you have the person who passes the petition around, they have to witness all the signatures.
Correct.
So I was wondering if anyone on your petition was contacted that signed it from any type of law enforcement that you're aware of, or if you were contacted?
Well, I believe a lot of people were contacted.
Okay. Well, I mean, I really, I really want the city to clean up, and I'll end by this. You know, your campaign slogan is "Actions Speak Louder Than Words." To me, submitting that affidavit incorrectly is, is a lack of respect to the campaign rules. I don't believe we should have a loophole switching parties and not admitting the serious error in the filing of the false affidavit. To me, it speaks volumes. And I just, I'm just a little shocked that more people aren't talking about it. That's all. Thank you.
Sorry, not perfect like you, pal. Thank you. Leslie Collins?
Good evening, council. I'm Leslie Collins. I am the president and CEO of Scranton Tomorrow. And I am here this evening to voice Scranton Tomorrow's support for the city of Scranton's downtown streetscape project. For those of you who don't know, back in 2018, Scranton Tomorrow hosted a public forum, and we contracted with urban planner, renowned urban planner, Jeff Speck. And we brought him here to really share national best practices for issues such as walkability and newer and updated urban design strategies. The forum was held at the University of Scranton and was a standing room only discussion. And that was a clear indicator to us that stakeholders within the community did have an interest in urban design and most definitely in walkability. And there were significant amount of questions that were posed to Jeff about best practices and areas that he compared to Scranton and how, what the outcomes of those were. So it was an in-depth discussion, and we did follow up the following day with a breakfast with Jeff that continued that conversation. So our interest in the city's plan is, is relevant. And since the time that we did have this forum with Jeff and numerous discussions, the city has brought Jeff back to the area, I believe twice, had two public forums that were very well attended at Lackawanna College. They have continued to do an in-depth assessment of the downtown district. And I do believe that they have assembled a team of professional engineers that worked in conjunction with the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation. And I think that piece is really significant in the plan because that means that it is up to the standards of the Commonwealth. Also, we believe that that pairing between the professional teams really brings a plan that's grounded in best practices. And it's looking at outdated infrastructure and challenging traffic patterns. And I think that, coming from a perspective of Scranton Tomorrow, where we work every day in the downtown district, we would say that two very, very important elements for us are the outdated infrastructure and those challenging traffic patterns. And we do hear from downtown businesses, specifically developers, often on those challenges. So we are, we are encouraged that this plan addresses those issues. From a staff perspective, I can tell you that as we are in the district on a daily basis, we see cars traveling at high rates of speed and merely using the downtown streets as a pass-through versus them really at a speed where they can take in and visualize all of the great assets that the downtown has. And that is an important fact that we have heard from downtown businesses, that they would like to see, you know, traffic calmed in some manner so that their business really can be, you know, visualized in a better manner with slower traffic. We do observe cars going down one-way streets on a daily basis. Our office is on Linden Street, and it's a daily occurrence where we have one to two cars, three cars. We have had multiple conversations with police officers, and they've done a wonderful job of doing everything, everything they can to stop that, but it is still a daily occurrence. And we also have witnessed on numerous occasions pedestrians crossing with the walk signal, giving them the go-ahead to cross the street while at the same time vehicles have the green light, and, which creates obviously a dangerous conflict between pedestrian and vehicle. What we value greatly in this plan is that it details both existing challenges and what we see as emerging opportunities. It focuses on issues that we have heard throughout our years in the downtown, which are pedestrian walkability, the safety issue between vehicle versus pedestrian, traffic calming measures, and how do we assist them in improving the visibility of their small business? So all very relevant elements. I should mention, I did come in late to caucus, but I did hear, I came in at the tail end of a conversation about outreach to the businesses. I do want to mention that we were not charged with outreach to the businesses. However, we have had conversations with businesses that have relayed concerns to us throughout, you know, recent times, and we're hoping that the plan would address. After, you know, a really fine detailed review of the plan, we did go back to the Ritz Theater, who had a concern in the past about the bumpouts and how that impedes their business. So we did go back and relay the information from the plan regarding the bumpouts for what would be proposed in their area. And we also did have in-depth conversations with Downtown Deli, who has throughout, you know, recent times, had concerns with the water runoff on the corner of Penn and Biden, as well as traffic calming and turning on one-way, or turning on one-way streets the wrong way. So we did have those two conversations, I just did want to bring that to light, but those were the two that, that we have had. We have not received any phone calls regarding the plan, and I think that should be noted. In the past, we have had discussions regarding parking and have had a lot of conversations. But just real quickly, if I, just real quickly, if I could just say that, do we anticipate that there will be, you know, adjust, an adjustment period to the plan? Yes, certainly, we do. I think that we would all expect that there would be some adjustments, but listening to caucus this evening, it appeared as though the engineers in the city seemed to feel that there would be a response time to any of those concerns. So I do thank you for your time, and I would appreciate review of the plan and, and hopefully your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
So the list that we got, this is a list from the city, it's not from Scranton Tomorrow?
That is not a list from Scranton Tomorrow, no. And I do know, we, we did have conversations with the city, and they did let us know that they were doing outreach, but when we saw certain elements in the plan that we knew that had been discussed with us from businesses and were concerns and hopes that they would be included in the plan, we did that reach out.
Yeah, some of the, like, some of the things that were discussed in the plan, the vaults under some of the, the fronts of the businesses on their sidewalks, the, the water that sits at Downtown Deli, things like that. I mean, these are things, this is part, you talked about aging infrastructure and also the challenging traffic patterns. This is aging infrastructure. Some of the things that I, I find, that I disagree with the plan are the traffic lights. So when we talk about Downtown Deli, I'm fully in agreement that they need something fixed. Places like Osaka and in front of, say, DaVinci's, where those vaults are, that needs to be fixed.
Yes.
Some of the bumpouts, curbs, stormwater and things like that downtown. So some of these businesses aren't really affected by the streetlights per se, but they're going to gain some improvements to their aging infrastructure around their businesses.
Correct. But I, like I said, I did not speak with that list of businesses, but there are support letters from the two businesses that we did discuss it with because we knew that those were concerned specifically of theirs.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Thank you. Rick Little?
Hello, Scranton, Rick Little. How much does it cost to speak an extra, like, three minutes in the five-minute thing? Is there a way to do that?
There's a way to do it if you are representing multiple businesses in downtown Scranton, and you have been doing that for many, many years. I will clear this, you will stop.
I can't hear you.
I said, "If you represent multiple businesses," that's what Scranton Tomorrow's all about, is to deal with our downtown businesses and help them grow. So if somebody that represents them wishes to come here and speak, I will allow it.
Oh, so?
That's my decision.
If I get businesses, if I get multiple businesses here?
If you're going to represent them, yes.
And I can get three extra minutes?
You're, you're on your time.
Oh, I'm on my time?
Yes, you are.
Well, I don't think that's fair for government.
Well, it's not your decision.
It should be a separate meeting, I think. But I'm running for a job of mayor, and I think things have to get better around here the way the government works, especially the municipal government. Everybody seems to have forgotten about the municipal government. They don't even take into account what the municipal part of it is. I mean, the Scranton YMCA is in Dunmore. Scranton Housing Authority is run by Lackawanna County. Nothing is Scranton's anymore. What, and the job I'm going for, what do they do? Well, they appoint the commissioners for the Scranton Housing Authority and for code enforcement, the police department, the fire department, to enforce laws. But the laws are plastic, they're elastic, they're, they're changing all the time. This thing about the streets is crazy, crazy. Just, they always come at you, all the media and all the discussions about health and I thought we solved that, you know? I've lived here for 20 years, watching them go through three different parking meter systems and, and this, making it a two-way street from a person who has broken my wrists three times in the 20 years I've been here, tripping, tripping on the cracks and the sidewalk falling down, breaking both my wrists. That happened three times. And, you know, and then I go into the, the system here, the system, the healthcare system. I broke my leg in 2017, that's the day I started growing my beard, and I'm living in Scranton Housing Authority. And I'm watching the, the social workers and everybody close in on me. They gave me 50,000 things of vitamin D, which was helping me, and then I get up at Abington Manor, which is an old folks' home. I totally understand that the elderly abuse that they talk about, especially during COVID, but some, there has to be, people just don't know what's going on. As I said, said at the so-called debate, I wasn't even debating anybody. They didn't even set it up that way, and we don't even have a legal women voters anymore. But, you know, we're all lost souls living in a fishbowl year after year. We're reading the Times Tribune, like, what is reality in this, in this town? Because the other day, this No Kings, No Kings is about King George. And the only real No Kings thing that I see going on is the BAR Association. BAR stands for British Accredited Registry. That is one-third of our constitutional government. They're not even teaching it in the schools anymore. All they're teaching is cultural Marxism, where everybody's a victim of an oppressor. And I guess the oppressor is, is, you know, the other day, it looks like the oppressor is Donald, billionaires and Donald Trump. And these were paid protesters, they all left at the same time to catch a bus. We need a, a chance in Scranton to give the people a voice, a voice. So I'm hoping people vote for me for mayor because the only thing that happened at the debate, they're arguing about lawsuits that, that happened years ago. There's a lot of lawsuits going on. There's too much problem with the judiciary getting involved in, in all this stuff and them fooling people that the people are represented by, by, you know, Lackawanna pro bono or, or Northeast Penn Legal.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Yeah, okay. Well, is this happening next week too?
Pardon me?
Are, are you here next week?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Gus Fahey?
Good evening, council. Thanks for having me speak. I'm Gus Fahey from Scranton. I'm very much in favor of the downtown connectivity study. I think we're, we're far overdue for a sort of refresh, a look at what our downtown uses are for. From what I understand, Joe Corcoran told me that the reason that the downtown streets are organized the way they are is because, is because of the Globe Store. Globe Store wanted people going, you know, zipping right down to their store and getting sort of stuck downtown. So to me, there's, that means that there's sort of high time to take a, a good look at what the city needs now and in the future. And so I thought it was very insightful for Wayne Evans to bring in Jeff Speck, to bring in a renowned urbanist, to take a look at Scranton and to see, like, what kind of insights that he could bring to make it downtown more vibrant, to make it downtown more livable, to make downtown more safe for pedestrians. And so I think that really helped a lot of us who are...
One second. Please.
Who are, who are thinking about these issues and that are interested in these issues, because he did bring up a lot of things that are counterintuitive at first, you know, to, that it makes it safer to have stop signs rather than lights for certain streets that have a certain kind of level of traffic. a certain kind of level of traffic volume. And so it was a counterintuitive insight to share that it was from a national expert that he brought to us. So I think that really sort of helped some of us that were thinking about these kinds of issues. And I think in particular downtown, one of the things that Jeff Speck said is that there are so many more people that want to live in walkable places than there are that actually live in walkable places. So most of us live, most of the country lives in places where it's really very car-centric. But Scranton's different, because we were designed to be really neighborhood-specific, where you could sort of walk to everything that you needed, from the church to the store to the school. They were all sort of centered in your neighborhoods. So I think we're really in a very good position to take advantage of these new populations that are moving into Scranton, and especially in the downtown, where you have retirees that are looking for just low maintenance. They want to live in a condo. They don't want to have to deal with, you know, a yard and all that, and they want to be able to walk around the downtown businesses. And then young people that are moving in. They really want to live in a place where it's not required for them to necessarily have a car. And so we want to attract those populations as well. And so I think designing a downtown that sort of responds to their needs will put us in a better position for growth. And I think we also need to be prepared for the train coming, because that also, I think our downtown really should be prepared to deal with potential new growth that's coming from that as well. So not only do I think that it's worth it to make our streets two ways, to make sure you can go around the courthouse, to make it easier to get around, and to make it safer to get around, but I also think that some of that logic could be extended into the neighborhoods as well. So I think that young people especially are looking for places where they can bike around. And if we make it safer for biking, then I think we'll have more growth in our neighborhoods as well. So if you can get to the downtown from the neighborhoods, you don't necessarily have to live in the, you know, the higher-rent districts of the downtown. You can still sort of make it down there without having a car or without a family having an additional car. Part of the reason that I'm so enamored with sort of walkable places is that if you don't have a car payment, or if you don't have an additional car payment for your family, you're halfway to affording a new mortgage. You're halfway to being able to buy a home in your family, in your place of residence, in your community. So I think, like, saving money and making a walkable place, I think that responds to not only the populations that we're trying to attract now, but when we think into the future, and maybe people that aren't necessarily represented here, but younger people are really looking for places that are more walkable and bikeable and safe, and they can really sort of get around. So that's what I would encourage you to adopt the plan. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Fahey. That is it for our sign-in sheet. Anybody else wish to address, council?
Good evening. I will be very fast. I have one thing to say, whether we have stop signs or whether we have red lights, we shouldn't be looking at the businesses we're driving by. We should be looking at the road so we don't hit anybody or go in the back end of some other vehicle. Okay, that's the end of that. Now, the only other thing I want to quickly ask is if anybody found out anything more about the Code Blue thing that I mentioned last week. I believe somebody said that they were going to see if they could find out anything when I asked if I should be going to the county.
The question about the temperature
Yes, about raising it.
Change, I did bring it up at the last Unsheltered Task Force meeting that I had attended, and that's a discussion I think they were open to, to see if that's something that needs to be changed. I know they had mentioned that the fire chief, it's usually at his discretion as to when they open the Code Blue, like, he keeps an eye on the weather. And then we'll take that into account, whether it's, you know, a lot of expected snow or windshield factors that are dipping. So he's the one that ends up making the call as to when the Code Blue shelter opens.
The fire chief makes that call?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, who's the fire chief?
Chief Judge, John Judge.
John Judge?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
And so it's something that they can consider, but in the past
So he's the person I have to harass?
Sure.
Right.
But in the past, they have gone by the standards of the county, but that was when the county had more resources like a Code Blue themselves. But
It's the county and the fire chief, then?
The county has had their own standards in the past. And so I think that 20-degree number, that it came from that. But the city has our, like, we can make it at our own discretion if we feel it needs to be higher than that.
So it's basically the fire chief?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you, Doris. Anyone else?
Tom Coymanuka. The mayor put out a video for the Recovery Act stating that she had a bunch of meetings and stakeholders before the Recovery Act. I did a right-to-know on that meeting. I asked who the stakeholders were. Who was at the meetings? There were no records. There were no stakeholders. Obviously, it was just the mayor's group deciding what they wanted to and calling their own group stakeholders. I'm sick and tired of hearing stakeholders over citizens. Why are the citizens that you represent not the stakeholders in this city? Businesses come and go. Residents are here, hopefully, for a lifetime, but sadly, that's not the case. Because we do not listen to our citizens, we listen to stakeholders, who, like our charity for the shelter, pack up and leave after they collect the money. Now, when I come to an intersection, that's two of them are one-ways. Each car has a straight option and a turn option. Total options in that intersection are four possible moves, straight turn and straight turn. Now, if I come to an allway, each intersection has three options, center, left, and right. Each cover or 12 possible turns. Which is safer, a pedestrian that has to watch four possible turns or a pedestrian that has to watch 12 possible turns? Is 12 less than four? Is splitting your attention between 12 easier than splitting between four? Moving on, stop signs in the plan, once they're down, they can't go up. So just like the Naug Park slide, what I expect is thieves in the night, they'll be removed, and someone will go, oops, but we can't replace it after it's done. We've seen that action beforehand, where they come in, rip stuff out, destroy it, and then there's no going back. I see the same play happening with these lights. You think the stop signs will have calm and are safer? I have questions for you then. Say you have two people, like Mr. King, racing to catch a light, but at the light they must stop. At a stop sign, they'll get mad at stalling in each stop sign, and they'll tap the brakes and go through. They'll get just as aggravated. They'll pull up quick, hit the brakes, pull through. It won't slow them up. A stoplight at least has a chance to slow them up for two minutes. A stop sign has a chance for them to stop and tap the brake and go through because they want to get where they're going, just like rushing through to beat a light. You think stop signs are safer and calmer? Are you ready to tell Scranton's children on Halloween, if they have the option to cross at a red light or cross at a four-way stop sign, they should go and cross at a four-way stop sign? Because they'll be safer crossing at a four-way stop sign than a light. I remember growing up, I was told to cross at the green, not in between, because the streetlights were safer. If that's not the case, we need to re-educate our children to cross at stop signs, especially on Halloween, for the safety of the children. Now, let's talk about it from a driver's position. I'm making a right-hand turn. I glance left. I then look right to the traffic coming. I check again, left, right, and then as I start to make the turn, I look left, opposite of that walk, because I'm looking to see if any traffic's coming down to go through the light at me, or is coming from straight ahead to cut into my lane. So at that point where I go, I'm turning this way, I look this way, check it, that way, check it, glance back again, look at the traffic, look for pedestrians, look at the traffic as I'm turning. My attention is not on the people crossing, because I'm looking opposite of the people as I'm making that curb. That's how you do it when you're making those turns. And stop signs don't even give you that option. I think it's a bad idea, and we're on the cusp of election, and we need to not go by a dog and pony show. Listen to the citizens' feedback, because it's important.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, council. Virgil Argento, Scranton. Mr. Smurl, last week you were asked by a resident if you were going to vote yes regarding the issue with the downtown streetscape, lights, stop signs. You said yes. That's very concerning that your mind is made up before the public has had a chance to weigh in, and the council has thoroughly discussed it. Now, Mr. Poches, former city engineer, brought up some valid questions and concerns. Doesn't your actions predetermine, undermine the democratic process, and the disregard the input of your constituents? How can you ensure that all voices are heard and considered if you have already made up your mind? This is not the type of representation that we need in the city right now. Regarding the board members, a few weeks ago, there were 62 board members, give or take, who failed to submit their required financial statement. It raises concerns about accountability and ethics. Do you have a number of how many complied, Mr. Smurl, and how many didn't comply?
Mr. Voldenberg, did we send that to the law department?
We did. We supplied them with the list.
Well, what's the outcome for these members who are not in compliance and thumb their nose? They knew when they were going to get on the board that they needed to have the financial statements. What are they hiding? When will be they be removed from their board seats? They're in clear violation, also an ethics violation. Recently, another board member who abruptly departed an elected seat due to rumored wrongdoing and investigations. Do you believe it's in the best interest of our community for this individual to hold a position on one of our city boards, considering the importance of ethics and integrity in public service? We all know who this person is. It might be time we get a better handle on our city boards. Regarding the other issue with the police lateral programs, you voted on that. Do we have any information on how that's going to take effect? Do we have any guidelines or anything that we can pass on to anybody for that lateral program, for the police department?
Well, I suppose we could ask the chief, Mr. Voldenberg, if that's immediately implemented?
I think that's important. You know, many officers, and it was a hurry-up, rush deal that we passed it through, just like what we're doing here with the streetscape.
I will. I'll ask that question tomorrow.
Mrs. Carrera, has some handouts, if you could give one to everybody? It's a two-page handout, Mrs. Carrera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Scranton City residents, Mike Mancini, Scranton. Honesty and integrity speak volumes when you are an elected official. Tonight, the mayoral debate from last Thursday and the removal of 15 traffic light intersections downtown. The words you choose define who you are. Your character follows you, just like your shadow. We witnessed quite the character flaw by the face of our city. Paige Cognetti told our citizens and voters that our city is safe. That was a lie. Council members in front of you, and will be posted to my Facebook page as a breakdown for the beginning of 2020, ending 2024. These are the same crime statistics provided by the city to the state. They can be found on Google by typing PAU CRS in the search bar. From 2020 through 2024, 10,072 have been charged with a crime, with only 1,981 arrested, 14 murders, 19 arrests, 378 rapes, only 22 arrested, 145 robberies, 22 arrests, 1,241 aggravated assaults, 435 arrests, 2,995 simple assaults, 1,044 arrests, 799 burglaries, 91 arrests, 4,100 larceny thefts, 319 arrests, 324 motor vehicle thefts, 13 arrests, 76 arsons, 15 arrests. Do these numbers sound safe to you? 20% were arrested in five years. Numbers do not lie. Paige Cognetti does. 8,091 charges remain unprocessed. How many warrants is that? There is no warrants department to pick up these individuals. 356 rapes in five years for victims without justice. It pains me to even read these numbers, because I too know the feeling of the word impact. What kind of impact has Paige caused? This is one of so many things that we've allowed an outsider to change. Restructuring our amazing police department has caused these incidents without justice. As you look through these numbers, think of every individual who did not ask to be impacted or violated. I would like each of you, after the remainder of my five minutes, tell your city what you think. Looking at these numbers, do you think it's been safer in the last five years? I would like the chair on public safety to start this discussion. Mr. McCandrew, you see the future. In our city daily, with your students and your grandchildren, you speak from the heart and see things for what they truly are. The other four chairs need to strive to become like you on behalf of those impacted or violated. How many warrants are outstanding? Do we have a warrants department? What's the oldest warrant? What's the process? Why do we have over 900 warrants that are not processed? The face of the place has an extra set of doors downstairs, as if she doesn't feel safe. To our citizens, after hearing these numbers, do you feel safe? Now, let's talk about safety in a different manner. Removing 15 traffic light intersections and replacing them downtown with stop signs is not a good plan. I do like the rest of it. Traffic lights cost $550,000 in intersection. These traffic lights need to remain. Here's why. Traffic lights are generally safer for pedestrians and cyclists because they provide a clear designated time to cross. Crashes at traffic lights are less likely to be fatal compared to those at stop signs. The risk of serious accidents at stop sign-controlled intersections is because drivers may run a stop sign or not come to a complete stop. These are called accidents because they happen. Changing the 15 intersections will cause a serious risk downtown and impact businesses that already noticed changes because of the meter changes. 8.25 million to replace these intersections. Once this part of the streetscape plan fails, there's a greater risk to those downtown if this plan passes in its current form. You heard this evening about safety and the risks that the face who wants out of this place has provided to each of our citizens. Do not risk your future on an outsider. Two days today, I'm sorry, two weeks today, your future depends on you. Vote for character, not failure. God bless our Scranton Police Department. Good evening, council.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Fifth order, 5A motions.
Mr. King, do you have any more comments?
Comment. Can we, um, Mr. Voldenberg, just send the question over to the chief, um, chief judge concerning the bump outs, handling turns by buses, fire trucks, tractor trailers, as was mentioned this evening?
I will, sir.
And, and also ask him if he feels as though it would, with stop signs, it would slow response times for the fire trucks. The, the one thing I do like about the study is that, uh, there's going to be 90 days. So like, once it's implemented, we're going to have 90 days to figure out, okay. In all the, all the engineering studies they've done, um, it appeared as though, well, that's how, that's how we came up with the plan. Not all intersections are switching to stop signs. Some are. You know, the study leaves lights where they are safer and where it makes sense, and it puts in stop signs where it's safer and where it makes sense. So, you know, I want to be able to allow the opportunity for this plan to be implemented and see what changes need to be made after 30, 60, 90 days. Um, because, you know, at the end of the day, um, I drive a lot, drive a ton. And, um, I know, I, I see people, when the lights are starting to turn yellow, and if they think they can make it, they're hitting the gas, they're not hitting the, they're not hitting the brake. And faster cars cause greater damage than slower vehicles that stop at stop signs. So, that's just kind of all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, any more comments?
Well, if I could mention two, just real quickly, I apologize. Um, and, you know, we say that the, the red lights are safer. I mean, a year or two ago, maybe three, two and a half, three years ago, someone was killed right at this corner here, at Mulberry Street and, and North Washington. And we had someone killed at the corner of North Washington and Linden Street. And somebody mentioned 2018, someone was killed at Lackawanna and Wyoming Avenue. Um, you know, all corners with lights and, you know, there's never going to be a perfect solution. That, you know, we have to say. And, you know, do people run stop signs? Yeah, they absolutely do. Do they run red lights? Yes, they absolutely do. Um, I like the idea of slowing, I believe that it will, the downtown areas. So, that's what I believe. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King.
Appreciate it.
Sorry, Mr. Schuster.
No, it's all right. Um, all right. I will, I'll speak, well, uh, Mr. Poches came in and he asked several questions. Uh, Mr. Voldenberg, I believe you're going to take a look at the video, get those, extrapolate those questions out of what he had said and, and take a look at it. Mr. King asked about the bump outs and whether to, you know, our fire trucks and, and larger vehicles can make those turns. Um, I did ask that question last week to Mr. Judge, and, and he said that they based those designs off of the turning radius on some of our fire department trucks, but I would like to see what the answer comes back is. Um, sometimes it comes back different. Today, there was a hearing for 1405 Cherry Street. Um, I do know that the individual, the defendant, didn't show up for the hearing today. So could we just ask the law department, what are the city's next steps when it comes to this? Um, it was shut down by the zoning board back in April. They're continuing to operate, but if we could see what the, what, what is the city going to do as its next steps regarding this business?
I will, sir.
Thank you. Um, I also got a message on the way over here about seeing if we can get the street sweeper over to the 16 and 1700 block of Wyoming Avenue. I do believe there's some construction and roadwork being done over there.
I'll request that.
Thank you very much. Um, I'll just touch on this. Leslie Collins was here tonight. She, she gave, gave us two, you know, two things. Aging infrastructure and challenging roadways or traffic patterns downtown. I do agree with a lot of this proposal, especially with aging infrastructure. A lot of the, the businesses, and I, and I do agree with these businesses, I'm not disagreeing with these businesses. There's aging infrastructure around their business, and they, I mean, it's time to improve it. Um, so on, on that aspect of this, I do agree with it. I could reach out to the business administrator, I could meet with her and see who else on this, this team is, is willing to meet coming up. Um, what I asked last week is just for us to slow this down, get input. There's been several times that we've moved forward with things, um, and we haven't got all the input, and we get feedback from the citizenry after it's passed. Um, I, I could think of at least three things that we've done this with. In the last week or so, I, I've knocked on many doors, I've spoke to many residents, and I, I've only had one that's been in agreement, other than some that came tonight and spoke tonight and some of the letters that we got. And some of those letters we got, I, I know these individuals, and I know why they would be for this project, and again, it's aging infrastructure. Looking at Courthouse Square, um, I don't like the removal of those streetlights in and around that area. When it comes to Courthouse Square, there's only businesses on one side of the road. If there was businesses on both sides of the road where cars can park and come at businesses at, from different angles, I, I may agree with this, but at this point in time, it's only the courthouse that's there. Um, and at this point, there is parking on both sides of the road, so there are access to all of these businesses. So, let's see where this goes. Again, tonight, I'll ask that we just pump the brakes on this and make sure we're getting all the input that we need. A lot of the people, and even businesses on this list that I spoke to in the last few days, were unaware of this project was even happening, so the word still isn't out that this is occurring, and, and many people are unaware of it. Um, that's all for tonight, Mr. Smurl.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Roth, do you have any motions or comments?
Uh, just a couple with regards to the walkability study and the legislation tonight that we're considering, and based off of a lot of comments that we've received. Um, I, I know there is a question about whether or not council members have walked downtown. I walk downtown all the time. I frequent a lot of businesses downtown, restaurants, coffee shops. I love coming downtown. Um, and I even with getting the list of intersections that would have potential changes, since then, I've driven and walked downtown through many of those intersections to just picture it for myself as to what, what it would look and feel like with those changes. Um, and I know that there are many of those intersections that I could see changing to stop signs from the signals, uh, that don't have as much traffic, and that I personally would still feel safe in crossing if there are stop signs. I think, um, a lot of people act like they've never crossed an intersection with a four-way stop before, either by driving or walking, and, um, I know I do it all the time. I have, even in, in my neighborhood, and I live near, like, nearby a pretty busy intersection with a four-way stop, and I've crossed there with my dogs, with my children, um, and I've even asked my four-year-old if she knows how to cross, uh, an intersection with a four-way stop, and she was able to articulate to me what you would do, uh, when you get to that, to that intersection, and stopping, making sure any vehicles that are coming are also stopping before you cross, and, uh, even, you know, us frequently, like, giving, giving the wave off to, um, to the driver, so you know that they see you or making eye contact. Things like that are important, and, um, most of us have, have learned that when you're a pedestrian and, and walking. And I've been to other cities too, where in the city there are intersections that are four-way stop, Philadelphia being one of them, where I've walked around quite a bit and haven't, um, really come into, into those issues. So, I, you know, I do see it as being a, a change for people, but I also think, uh, in our minds, it's, and the way that it's been portrayed, it's as if, um, all of downtown is going to be changing from, from lights to four-way stops, which is not the case. Um, it's just at these intersections where they've found that it's, that it's warranted. Um, so, uh, you know, I think it's, it's worth a shot. It's something that we've been told we can reverse if there are intersections that we find, uh, should not be a four-way stop and, and should in fact be a signal, and that might be, maybe there's, there's traffic backing up somewhere along, along the line, they need to still keep the signal there. Um, so, I mean, I do feel more comfortable with that, um, being an option and not necessarily being permanent. Um, and, uh, that's, that's all that I have to, to add to that for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roth. Mr. McCandrew, do you have any motions or comments?
Yeah, I might as well speak to caucus tonight, uh, and what occurred. So, first of all, before that, I, I, I'm thrilled that Mr. Poches came here, right? Okay, he said he's, he's speaking as a citizen, a resident, but he was also the former city engineer. So, I take that as a second opinion. Why not? Um, we relied on his expertise in the past. Um, I'm thrilled he chimed in, um, you know, and he bring a different perspective, that he's not in favor of changing the traffic lights to, uh, four-way stops. So, I appreciate his expertise and opinion, helps reinforce mine. I'm thrilled he was here. Uh, also, so, this is the second caucus that the engineer and some, well, some administration came tonight, and I'm still confused. Uh, first of all, he said, okay, they, they admitted they only had two meetings, which is fine, and, you know, everybody, the council was invited. Well, we get invited to a lot of meetings, uh, and studies where there, these groups present, but most of the time they're during the day, when we're working. Let, let's face it. Or I get invited to the meeting a day before or an hour before. So, it's not fair to say you were, you're invited, and, and there was only two in the past two years. So, um, where I would have brought up these concerns. But, um, in addition, so the past two weeks, you know, like stated tonight, okay, we have to change the stop signs, it's safer, it's safer. Data says that it's safer, and all the research we did says, or states that it's safer, but we're going to do a trial. But in the same breath, prior to that statement, um, the city engineer says, well, you know, if you want to change this, if you don't, if you vote against this, this might not pass, because we have to go back to PennDOT with the permits. And it's all permit-related, and it's based on years ago information versus criteria that's different now. So, I, I'm finding it hard to believe that there's wiggle room for some of the businesses and, and associations that are supposedly in contact, that they, they can address their concerns moving forward. Doesn't look like that to me, like I said earlier. The decisions were made two years ago. I don't see the wiggle room, because in one breath, they say, well, we'll take in consideration, there's ongoing discussion, but, you know, you want to make some changes. It affects the criteria and the permit, permits that took so long to get, we might not be able to get. So I'm still confused with all this. Uh, and, and I, I don't like being confused, or I don't want to say misled, but, but the information every week changes a little bit, and, so, um, I'll speak more too on the question, but that, that's where I stand with this. And I still, they haven't changed my mind yet or convinced me otherwise. In addition to that, I just want to report also, on September 2nd, my, I got a response from the city administration. This was regarding, uh, Meridian Ave, Luzerne Street, and Railroad Ave, Luzerne Street, about, um, the turning lanes being repainted. So, and so I finally got an answer that makes sense, so, um, Park to Luzerne Street are on the 2025 paving list. However, the section at Luzerne Street and Railroad is not on the paving list, so now they're going to take a look at it and, and pave the crosswalks. Uh, they're going to prioritize this, because I brought this up like three or four times. Uh, but they said, previous attempts to complete this work, I didn't know they were even going to attempt to complete it, because I didn't get a response. So, you know, they state that it was interrupted by weather. So I hope before, you know, we get the obvious weather coming, that this gets completed. So I'm taking them on their word for that. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McCandrew. Earlier tonight, um, chief judge was saying how it speeds up response time, but it, it wasn't, um, what he was speaking about if, um, going to downtown. If you had to go, say, um, to somewhere across from the courthouse, a restaurant on Adams Avenue, when the fire department goes out, they'd have to turn left, go up Mulberry, turn left on, on Washington, go down another block, turn right onto Biden, then go up another block, and then turn left on Adams. It goes six blocks to get to a block that you're a block and a half away, if the roads are two ways. That's what he was talking about speeding up, not changing traffic lights and stuff, and that's what that was all about. So, I wanted to straighten that out. Also, today, um, PennDOT was back up at the Harrison Avenue Bridge, and they did seal all of the cracks, uh, all of the surface cracks, um, that were, um, visible. They also did it last year. They said they would continue doing it as long as they were cracking. And also, um, our budget, um, administration said the budget is completed, well, almost complete, uh, and we should have it, um, be by the end of the month. Um, my last meeting with the budget is actually tomorrow afternoon with the administration. So, um, I, I hope that it's, um, it, it stays at no tax increase and that we get it, um, by the 30th. That's it, Mr. Voldenberg.
5B for introduction, a resolution, reappointment of Michael Hanley as a member of the Scranton Housing Authority Board for a term to expire September 27th, 2030.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
5C for introduction, a resolution, accepting a donation presented to the city of Scranton Fire Department from Wayne and Catherine Beck in the amount of $100.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
5D for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant for up to $314,768, to be used towards the Route 307 Music Street Scenic Lookout renovation project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, I'm, I'm glad to see us, uh, acting quickly on this and putting in this grant application, and I hope the city is successful in receiving it, uh, because, uh, I think we all want to see, um, the lookout be fixed up and renovated, and I think, uh, we need this money to help us get there, so, uh, I'll be voting in favor of this.
Thank you. All those in favor, introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
5E for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant for up to $1 million, to be used towards the Lackawanna Avenue Streetscape Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
5F for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Baseline Contracting, Inc., for the West Side Gateway Streetscape Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, could we check with the administration? I believe state funding was given to us, um, some time back, um, about the area from, near North Main Avenue and Euclid Ave. I've been told that state, state funding was given for, for gateway signs, um, in that area, and, uh, just looking to see where that's at and if...
I believe there was. I'll follow up and ask.
Thank you very much.
Any others? Thank you. All those in favor, introductions signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, and so move.
5G for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Leeward Construction, Inc., to perform Fawnwood Phase One Stormwater Improvement Contract Two services.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So move.
Second.
Second.
On the question.
On the question, it's great to see that Kaiser Valley stormwater projects are beginning. Same thing with East Mountain, but, uh, these projects are much needed for quite some time now, so it's good to see that. Kaiser Valley is starting to get some stormwater improvements.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed a council number 97, 2025, in ordinance, installing all-way stops in certain downtown intersections for added pedestrian safety.
You've heard reading by title. You've heard reading by title of item 6A, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A, pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, this is installing of the all-way stops. As I said, I spoke to many people over the last few days. I hope that this could slow up somewhat. I'm going to vote no to 6A tonight, rather than make that motion to table and we'll get it to Seventh Order and see where we go from there, but like to get some more input from the city businesses, like to get some more input from individuals in the city, but I mean, that WBRE survey came out, 85% are saying no and the numbers that I'm getting in person from individuals that I know and constituents that I represent are also saying they don't like it. As I said earlier, two pathways here, aging infrastructure, I'm all for improving aging infrastructure downtown. Those challenging traffic patterns, some of that I beg to differ, and some of these stop, stop signs moving to all, all four-way stops, I'm in agreement with. Near CYC up on Vine, I, I'm in agreement with that stop sign. Some of the ones in the, in the more central downtown area, I am not.
On the question, I wonder how many people in that WBRE study or poll, what have you, actually know or understand the study or understand how much work and time that has gone into this. And that there's a 90-day phase in too, to make adjustments if, if determined, so just wondering that.
Also, the way that poll was phrased made it seem like all lights, traffic lights were being removed downtown, so it didn't really, really explain the scope of the changes.
Yeah, it's not the case, I knew that was going to be brought up tonight and I knew some of my individuals up here were going to say that tonight, but, you know, here we go time and time again. Rush things through, what I'm hearing from the public, out in the public, most people are unaware of it. And again, as we said with that poll, most people are unaware of the whole plan. And we're also getting last-minute legislation again, it's coming out at the last minute and saying there's a time constraint on it and it must go through, so. I mean, mistakes that we made time and time again that I'm trying to avoid.
Okay, so on the question, is the investment worth it? I like most of the plan. We need the sidewalks, we need the paving, we need new storm drains. We need some of the facade, we need, I love to see the lights around the Radisson in that fix. I'm in, I'm in favor for most of it, but that doesn't mean I have to like all of it. So since last week, I've had the opportunity to speak to residents, retired and current police officers and retired and current state policemen. None of them thought the change, the changing of traffic lights to four-way stops was a good idea, none of them. I took my old poll, my old poll. And what they would like to see is more of the investment made into the neighborhoods. And I know administrations say, well, we're doing some here and some there, but I think they'd like to see more of this money being spent downtown and into their neighborhoods. Because this is going to be very costly to change these, these lights to four-way blinking stops with another light blinking on top of it. It's going to cost a lot of money and a lot of money to maintain, so I agree with that. So, and, and like most, I also saw the results of the WBRE WIU 2822 Insta-Poll. I don't know, it's a poll. Maybe, you know, and I thought, well, maybe not, they're not all residents and it doesn't matter because they might be there might be customers that, that, that come downtown just as much as the residents. So I value their opinion and, and so they took the time to fill out, fill it up. Did they know the whole plan, the thousand-page plan, I don't even know it, so. But I value their opinion, right? People, people use polls all the time, every election they rely on them and they're constantly taking them, so there is some value to it. So I, I put some value to it. And, you know, I sit in this seat at the pleasure of the taxpayers and the residents that I represent. I don't report to anyone in City Hall, but I do report to all of you, meaning the residents, and guess what, I'm listening. So once again, you know, my, my position is replacing lights with stop signs is not just inconvenient, but I really believe it's dangerous.
On the question, I just want to add that if this legislation was to be voted down, then as was reiterated to us tonight and explained that they would need to go back to the state where they've already submitted plans for the permits and that process could be lengthy and could jeopardize the use of ARPA funds for these projects. So not only jeopardizing the, the changes from signals to four-way stops, but then also any of the other things included in this plan that may not be possible without those funds. So just wanted to mention that that is another reason that I'd be voting for this piece.
I'd like to also add, but guess what, they're going to spend the money. If, if these lights got voted down, that money's going to be spent on everything else. They say that there's a little wiggle room, like I said, I don't know if I believe it or not, but, okay, we, we know the money has to be spent by '26. We get it, they're going to spend it. So I don't think that shuts down the whole project or affects the sense of urgency.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, and so move.
6B, reading by title, filed a council number 98, 2025 in ordinance, authorizing the conversion of certain portions of the downtown from one-way streets to two-way streets and from two-way to one-way streets as outlined and specified herein.
You've heard reading by title of item 6B, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6B pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, I brought it up earlier in the meeting, around the courthouse, there's only businesses on one side of the street and there is parking on both sides. As I stated before, right at this point in time, what I'm hearing from the residents is the residents don't like it. Those individuals that are saying they do like it are, are businesses that do need some improvements with their aging infrastructure and I will agree with them. Is this worth it to the business? Have we talked to all of them and do they agree? And the list that we got about the businesses was slightly misleading because it, it made us believe that all of these businesses were in agreement with this when, I don't know how many of them are or aren't.
All those in favor?
Also, the same people that I spoke to regarding the four-way stops felt the same way about the, the changing the one ways, the two ways. And, and I, I again had the same questions regarding the merchants that were contacted, not contacted, maybe once, maybe phone call, maybe email. They sent us, because it was requested last week, we got in our packet, they're all highlighted. I don't know what highlighted means, were they contacted two years ago? Some of them have told us that we don't even know what's going on because there was only really one information, information session that they might have been invited to. And then Scranton tomorrow, and then the business administrator said, oh yeah, we, you know, we had Scranton tomorrow take care of that. And, and then Leslie Collins said, well, we did a piece of it, we were tasked with something, not really tasked, but we did some of it. So it's unclear to, I was led to believe that the ones that were highlighted were in favor of everything. That's not the truth. So I don't know why we got that and, and, you know, once I saw just highlighted business owners and no rationale or no explanation of like each one, how they felt. Okay, some are getting downtown deli, that's something visible that should have been taken care of already. So, so maybe they were waiting on, on this project, which is fine. So, you know, standing water is, is dangerous no matter what. That's not something they would have to voice their concerns and beg to be part of the program or this project. That should have been taken care of already or, or, you know, benefits of doubt, they were going to take care of it when, when they did the overall project.
On the question, I'm not aware of any business owner that has come here to City Hall to a, a board, a city council meeting to express their concerns about not wanting this up, I find that to be compelling.
On the question, I don't, I don't expect that even if they did ask every business on that, are you in agreement with this piece of legislation, are you in agreement with this one and, and like so forth? If 100% of them would be in agreement with every piece and, and that's okay, that we can have differences on this and I appreciate the discussion. I also appreciate and respect the responses that, that we've received from the administration. Those who've spent so many ti, so much time studying this and, and planning it out to make sure that it does work the best that it can. And Ms. Supriani did clarify and respond to Councilman McAndrew's questions tonight and she said that it's been over the last year, she said it was her staff who personally made phone calls or physically went to these places of businesses and spoke with them about the potential changes. And I, I don't know if he's calling her a liar because he keep saying that what she said wasn't actually true, or at least from, from your account, so.
First of all, I didn't call her a liar.
You're saying supposedly over the last two years and I don't know if it was email or what she clarified tonight.
She said some.
And she said, so.
Some were called, but not all of them. I've spoke to ones that said they weren't.
I think they've made attempts on all these.
All right, whatever.
Saying what, her explanation tonight and her response for your questions was not valid, so.
I just say it wasn't valid, it wasn't clear enough for me. I like clarity.
All right, I thought it was, I thought it was clear, but, and we have the list and they have highlighted the majority of them that they were able to get in touch with and, and speak with about these changes, so. I appreciate that, that work being done. And that's good enough for me.
Thank you. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
The ayes have it, so move.
6C, reading by title, filed a council number 99, 2025 in ordinance, establishing no parking zones for portions of certain roadways to conform to state regulations and to improve pedestrian safety.
If I read my title of item 6B, what is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6C pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm sorry, no. The ayes have it, and so move.
Seventh Order 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for adoption, Resolution Number 271, 2025, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the City of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account grant for up to $198,170 to be used towards the purchase of a modular vehicle barrier trailer system.
What is recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McCandless?
Yes.
Mr. Smol?
Yes, hereby declare item 7A legally, lawfully adopted.
Eighth Order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you, this meeting is adjourned.